Hello.
Hello.
What you up to? Just a bunch of legends.
I'm starting my meeting, I'm waiting for my others to join. Quiet down there. That's it? You know, that's not even in one hundred.
It's fifty minutes.
Yeah.
Three sets of beach.
No.
Lovely. Black quartering.
Oh yeah, that thing.
We did that after, after taking dumb dolls.
Hi Bob. Alright, bye guys. This working from home stuff is for the birds.
I'm glad I don't have to do that. I'd much rather go to work.
This is my first day working from home.
Oh really?
I'll be here all week, I don't like it. If I had my whole office that I could bring here, then I'd be fine.
Yeah right.
Yeah.
Uh, this is Steve Jeskowitz, is anyone online?
I'm here Steve. Lisa.
I'm here too Steve, it's Bob.
Hi Bob.
How are you?
Good, good, I see you got the number.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Wrong, I was looking in the wrong email.
Oh. Lisa, are you online?
I am.
Okay, was anyone else online before I came on?
Just Bob and I.
Okay. Well, obviously we're a couple minutes here.
I know Kate won't be coming on.
Kate, no?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah Lisa, did you get my note back on? The part I was trying to look at is when I call up a meeting, um, in the meeting portal, it talks about the PMBC and has the members and everything.
Okay.
I'm trying to figure out how I get that updated because it still has Jamie Allen and John Pettaplace and others there.
Oh, that one, okay, that's probably, I don't have control over that. So I'll have to contact, um, probably Regina, probably our MIS.
Okay, no problem.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I think all that got transferred over from the IQM2, so yeah, I'm not sure about that. So far I just see. I just see you two. No one else has joined in yet.
Yeah, it's only now, uh, four fifty-nine, so.
Yeah.
And this time we had to put in a password, last time we didn't.
Oh really?
Yeah, it asked for a password, but you provided it.
It's on, uh, yeah.
Yeah, last time it said if you don't have a password, just hit some key and we did that. Um, this time it asks for a password, put it in.
I don't know, I did the same thing as last time. I just told Bob, I said this working from home is for the birds, I don't like it.
Oh, I, I agree.
I, I don't have.
I didn't have to use the password. I had to join meeting and everything popped right up.
Oh, you're on the webex, so I'm on the phone.
He's on the phone, Bob and, yeah, this is the first time I'm on the webex, um. I'm trying to think, the last week I did by the phone, I don't remember if I had to or not.
Alright, we'll see how it turns out, um, anyone else come online, I got Bob myself.
Wayne is coming on now, he usually does web access. Yep, there he is.
Hi Lisa.
Hey Wayne.
Hi Wayne.
Someone else is calling in.
Mike Brennan here.
Oh Mike, okay.
Pete McIntyre here.
Pete's here.
Alright, so we have Pete McIntyre, Bob's on the phone, Wayne, myself, uh. Is Gary online?
No, I don't see him.
Steve Shuttleworth, not yet.
No.
Alright, and Bob indicated Katie was not gonna make it on the line.
And I don't see Jerry.
Yeah, I saw Jerry a couple days ago. We'll give him another couple of minutes.
I saw Jerry a couple of days ago.
Well, we will, we do have a quorum, so.
Someone, just someone.
Uh, this is Jerry Comiskey.
Oh Jerry, okay. That's four.
Alright, so we got Jerry, we got Pete, we got Bob, and we got myself, that's a quorum. Uh, so we'll go ahead and kick off the meeting here, um, alright, so, uh. This, uh, is a, uh, virtual, um, meeting through, uh, webex and phone of the permanent municipal building committee for the town of Ledyard. Today is Monday, uh, April twentieth, it is, uh, five oh five PM, it should be five oh two PM, and I call this meeting to order. Did someone just come online? We're about to do roll call, so, uh, we just called the meeting to order. So we'll start with a roll call, so if, uh, you'll follow me and state your name, uh. And, uh, your company if you're not with the building committee, so Steve Jeskowitz, Chair Building Committee.
Uh, Jerry Comiskey, Chair Building Committee.
Bob Guerrero, Board of Ed.
Wayne Donaldson, Ledger Public Schools.
Pete, you there?
Uh, Pete McIntyre is here.
Okay.
And, is it Mike Brennan, Mike you said you were there?
Yeah, Mike Brennan, ONG.
Okay.
Alright, so yeah. So I'm just gonna go down, read that, I'm gonna read who I think they have online, if there's anyone else, or any, um, citizens, please chime in. I have Mike Brennan, I have Lisa, I have Wayne, Jerry, Pete, Bob, and myself.
You also have Dan Hepsler with ONG.
Alright, thank you Dan. Okay, uh, so, uh, absent right now, we have, um, Kate Palmer-Herp, we have Gary Schneider, and Steve Shuttleworth. And we have a quorum, and I'm ready to move forward with the meeting. Okay, first item we have on the agenda is approval of the minutes from six April twenty twenty. Uh, those minutes are available on the portal, um, and if, uh, at this point here, I will entertain motions to approve the meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, that was a second, so, uh, that was Jerry, so, uh, let me rephrase that, I will, uh, I move that we approve the minutes as written, uh, and. Uh, Jerry, that was the seconding by you?
Yes.
Is there any discussion on the minutes? There are none, all in favor of approving the minutes as written, signify by saying your name and eye, Steve Jeskowitz, eye.
Uh, Jerry Comiskey, eye.
Yeah, we got both Pete and I didn't get the other name there.
Jerry Comiskey, eye.
Bob Guerrero, eye.
Alright, uh, with that, the, uh, the eyes have it, and the minutes are approved. Alright, moving on to the next item on the agenda.
Excuse me Steve, I think as John Marshall just came in, Johnny, you there?
I'm here.
Okay, John Marshall just came in.
Alright, welcome John, uh, so far we've called the meeting to order, we had a roll call, you're now on that roll call, we approved the minutes of six April. Um, and I'm at the point for citizens' comments on the agenda. So with that, I'd like to take about a thirty-second break here, if there are any citizens that have dialed in on the line that wish to be heard, please state your name and your address. Okay, having heard most citizens' comments. Was there a comment from a citizen? If not, I'm moving on to the informational items, which I have none to, uh, to share with you, uh, other than a comment that the, uh, the, the Board of Ed and the Town Council will be meeting to discuss the funding for the asbestos project. And, uh, Wayne will cover that, uh, later, and, uh, Wayne or I will cover it when we get to that part of the, uh, agenda. Alright, so with that, uh, I did manage to email out to you guys just shortly before the meeting, the, um, uh. The report of, uh, the financial status of the report for the two school projects. Um, hopefully everyone is able to, like, to get that and bring it up on their screens. Uh, for those of you that are in front of a computer right now, this actually makes it a little bit easier for these things. Uh, so we're gonna be talking about that as we get into the, uh, school projects. So with that, uh, what I'd like to do is to go ahead and let Wayne, uh, first talk about what's going on in the schools. Um, take either school first, uh, Wayne, if you want to give us the report.
Sure, absolutely, I'll start with the middle school. Um, I met with, uh, I think it's BSC, the contractor and ONG. All the plantings are now complete, pending, uh, any trees and stuff that haven't budded out yet that, uh, don't come back. Uh, but they have planted all the trees, the, uh. Uh, tree that was cut down, uh, memorial tree has been replanted with the same type. Uh, there are still some fence issues, um, one Ballard cover that's missing, and some work on the pavers that have to be done. Other than that, we're in pretty good shape with the exterior items at the, um, middle school. Still don't have any updates on the heating issue there. Um, a little concerned that this is gonna drag out into the next heating season now. Um, you know, because we don't, you know, whatever they do, we don't, won't have an opportunity to test it and see if we can maintain the heat in the rooms without, you know, running full blast. Um, the stairwell doors have been repaired. Um, we'll do the painting on those where the, uh, they touched up and, you know, did the repair work, so we'll take care of the painting on that. Uh, we're still waiting for them to come back and do the cafeteria and auditorium door hinges. At this point, neither section of the parking lot lights are working. Uh, the very front section, um, will not come on, and the rear section and the bus loop, uh, are on twenty-four seven, they don't go off. I don't have any update on the signs, I haven't gotten any update on the signs from ONG. Um, you know, where it's, uh, the letters are chipping off, um, where we stand on that. Uh, and I have sent the Wayfair signs out for pricing, uh, Mike said that we wanted to do, we're gonna try and do that, um. Independently of the, of ONG, so we could save some funds there, um. A lot of.
Wayne, hang on a second. Which, which way, you're talking about internal or external wayfinding signs?
Talking about the, uh, internal Wayfair signs for the gym and the auditorium, that, those. Um, they were never ordered by ONG.
So when they were in, so the, uh, we, we had the design for that, the replacement for that, and they were never ordered, or SPA, uh. Were they ordered for either school?
No. No, they sent me over the thing, and said that it was their suggestion that I look into doing them, because we can, my crew can install them, that's not a problem. The companies that, um, would do them were closed because of COVID. I did talk to one of them, and they had some pricing, and they were gonna get it to me, they finally did, were able to get some pricing. Um, so I expect to have that, you know, maybe later tonight, or sometime before the end of the week, and I'll pass it on to you, Steve.
Okay, and this is an example, this is an example Wayne, of some of the things that with your crew that has a little bit of, uh, time to take care of some of these things.
Yes.
Something that was not in the original plan, that we would be adding a change order in, we might be able to save some labor by having your folks do it instead of, and we talked about some of those already.
Absolutely.
Opportunity for us, and this is a good case like that.
I'm more than happy to do that.
Alright, I wanna go back to the lighting in the parking lot, real quick, uh, is this a new problem at the middle school?
It is a new problem that occurred about two months ago, they came out and fixed it, and now it's reoccurring.
It, it, it was fixed Stephen, it broke again, so it, it's. We called the Ferguson, there, there is obviously something in, in the, the material procurement that they're buying and that keeps breaking, so. Um, it, it, and it's occurred at both schools, Gallup had a different issue, but the same thing, that the, both schools were repaired, and they both failed again, so, we're looking into it.
Alright, is that a photoelectric cell issue, or is this a timer?
We don't know at this point, um, it is a combination of both. It, the lights have one-ten power, or two-seventy-seven, whatever they are. From. Eleven, from four-thirty, five o'clock in the morning, until eleven o'clock at night. And then the photo cell is supposed to shut them off in the morning when the sun comes up, and turn them back on when the sun goes down in the evening. So, uh, and then there is no power to them from eleven at night till five in the morning.
Alright, well, again, I'm, I'm a, I'm a big fan of these things of timers over photo cells, because we can actually predict when the sun goes up and down. Um, with pretty good accuracy, so I'm not even sure why we have photo cells, which just create problems in the system, so, um, needless to say. Alright, uh, with that, um, I'm going to, uh, one more question on the heating. And what, since you brought that up, uh, Mike Brennan, um, do we know when, uh, I guess that's action air for the middle school, correct? Would be back out?
Yeah, there, uh, from, Wayne stated that there was a heat problem, there's, there's a noise problem in three-eighteen that he hasn't got back out yet, and he, he's got a list of things to do, he's got a filter change that he hasn't done, that it's just getting a body out there to do it, the filters he's got is just, again, coming up with people that wanna work. Um. There was a, there was a rattle, and I believe it was three-eighteen, if I'm not mistaken, I don't have my, my, my list in front of me. That needs to be checked out. Okay, that needs to be checked out, but, all in all, the heats, the heat side at LMS is in good shape. Gallup Hill is where I'm waiting for the balancer to get me some. Go back and, and re, back, excuse me, not rebalance. Uh. Get a, 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 a reconformation on the, on the CFM for a certain amount of rooms to, and hand that off to, uh, Silver Petrocelli.
Okay.
Did they, um, straighten, straighten out the heat problem in the, in the, uh, guidance, those two offices in guidance?
Um. I'd have to look at my notes Wayne, where, where the, where that got left off, I, I'm not, I'm not sure at this point.
I didn't hear any more on that, so that could still be an issue.
Alright, well with that then, uh, Wayne, do you have anything else on the middle school before we move on to Gallup Hill?
The only other thing I had is we had a couple of, um, um, roof leaks there, over the, uh, in the past heavy rain we had the other, last week. Still getting water in in the, um, media center, in the area of the door in the corner of the building there. Uh, still getting water in on the stage, um. And. Get some water in this, in the main entry, but, um, I don't think that's an ONG issue, I think it's related to the solar. Um, Mike was gonna have, uh, the roof for people to look at it.
Understand, um, the, uh. Now with the net, with the classrooms, uh, being closed up right now without students in there, uh, are your folks going into those rooms every day, uh, for looking for leaks and things?
Yes, we're checking them on a regular basis.
Good, alright, uh, if you're done with Ledger Middle, let's, uh, move on to Gallup Hill.
Okay, uh, good news finally, the stair treads are in, and they were starting to install them today. They actually got me installed today, they were spent most of the day removing the old ones on the remaining stairways that they hadn't gotten to before. Oh, they might have gotten, I wasn't there late in the day, so they might have started sometime late in the day. But, once they're done there, I understand they'll be moving over to the middle school. Um, we had a major glycol leak, uh, in the heating system at Gallup Hill.
Out it was directly.
The, uh, server, in the, uh, server room upstairs. Down on the top all had equipment, um, right now it looks like it survived, um, we're not seeing any problems there, we were able to get it shut down. Let it dry out before we restarted it, um, turned out to be a failed solder joint. Uh, when they refilled the system, uh, we had another burst solder joint in the. On the glycol system in the gym. Well, that was two that showed up that dumped considerable, um, amounts of glycol onto the building.
The. I'm actually, I'm actually surprised Wayne that they have glycol piping running in the server room.
Yeah. Oh my, and it goes right up over the, uh, over the servers and stuff, that's where the unit is mounted on, on the roof for that area.
One thing we might wanna take a look at is, um, when we install data centers and stuff, specifically at work, um, they have a shielding thing that goes over the top of those, so that if the sprinklers or any pipes leak, or roof leaks, that the water doesn't get into the server racks, um, they, very inexpensive little covers.
Yeah.
Go on the top.
Not a bad idea in this.
Okay, uh, keep going on, Gallup?
Uh, again, Mike already mentioned the parking lot lights that are out, uh, at the point it was the exact opposite. Gallup Hill was coming on, not going off, they were going all night long, um, all day long, and the middle school was originally, weren't coming on. But now half of them are not coming on, and half of them at the middle school are going off. Um, they have been out and worked on them, they did correct it, it didn't work for thirty days, forty-five days, uh, but they're back. Um, I did meet with, uh, Dan. I did meet with Dan and the crew for the exterior work at Gallup Hill. They, Gerber was out. They did some of their punch list. Late last week, Friday, Saturday. So some of their work has been done. I was under the impression that the landscaper was supposed to be out Friday or Saturday. But I didn't see any indication that any of the landscaping, cleaning. So we're waiting on that, but we did go over everything. So everybody's aware of what they need to clean up. The mounts for the TVs have been ordered, I'm told by Mike. He can confirm that. As soon as they come in, we'll get those installed on our end.
Now, Wayne, how are we ordering, we're ordering them through the vendor, but we're just not going to have them install them?
Correct. I did go directly to the manufacturer and the price that I was getting was slightly higher than what Mike had given me. So I figured let them do it even with his commission and stuff or his add-on. It was still. A few dollars less than what I could get him directly for.
Okay. And we'll talk, so for the committee on this particular one, the TV mount that we were going to have installed in the Gallup Hill School. Wayne took a look at the cost estimate for that, for the labor and said that that was $25,000 of labor that we could avoid by having his team install them. So that's our intentions there and we'll save a little bit of money there. Wayne, I want to go back to what you were talking about, the, the lights. Do we happen to know, or ONG chime in? Is it the same equipment in both schools for the light system that turns them on and off? Because if this is breaking every 30 days, we need to find another solution here.
I, I don't know if it's the same equipment, Steve.
I, I don't either.
I'll ask. I'll ask.
I think it, we need to have Silver Petricelli's engineers that designed this thing taking another look and say, hey, if it's common equipment and it's. Then, you know, we need to find another solution here because it's going to be a problem moving forward and I'm a firm believer, keep it simple.
Steve?
Yeah.
This is Steve from Silver Petricelli. I just finally logged in.
Okay.
So what, what is the issue? I apologize.
We're talking about the parking lot lights in both schools. We're having chronic problems with them. My understanding and talking to the team on the phone here is that we have a combination of timers and photo cells working together.
Yes.
And I'm just going to ask a really dumb question. When we designed the system, why on earth would we have put photo cells in if we know? That the, we know when the sun comes up and we know what time we want the lights to go off, why would we complicate the design with photo cells?
I believe there was two different systems going on at the time, but I can verify that with our engineers.
Yeah, because the word we're getting here is that this is probably, and Wayne, correct me if I'm not giving the right answer here, but. I think this is probably the fourth time we've had to have them serviced or maintained within a year and a half. And if they have to be continuously coming out and replacing parts and components. You know, do we have a design problem here or should we be going to a different type of controller? That turns these things just on and off based on time. Again, you know, these are very, very, the, I have a controller in my house. It doesn't have a photo cell. It just knows my latitude and longitude because I've put it in and it knows when the sun's going to come up and down. It even accounts for daylight savings time and does its trick. And it cost me about 30 bucks for a Lutron controller. So I realize the voltages and the everything are a little more complex here, but this shouldn't be rocket science.
I will find out.
You know, because we got people complaining the lights are on all night or they're not coming on at all. So we have a safety issue or a nuisance issue, which we don't really, shouldn't be dealing with. So with that, Wayne, what else, and I guess for everyone on the, on the call here, anyone who has information, chime in. Where do we stand with the redesign or engineering analysis of the four rooms in Gallup for HVAC?
I haven't heard more, but maybe ONG can.
Yeah, I, those are the four rooms that I, I'm trying to get the balancer back, Steve, that Silver Petricelli asked. Us to reconfirm some of the data that was on the balancing report. So they want to look at those four rooms again by way of CFM coming into them. And then go back and look at it, look at those four rooms and see, you know, what they could do with them. But I, so I'm-
We're going back to the same issue Wayne had before is if we wait too long, we're going to be back out of the cooling, heating season and then we're going to kick this can another year. So let's, we got to try to move that up if we can.
Okay.
All right. Anything else, Wayne, on the Gallup Hill School?
No, it's pretty much it. I mean, we're moving along. I mean, Mike has been receptive. We're getting things done. So, you know.
The, those, they're going to be starting FYI for everybody's information, the fence work is going to be starting next Monday. The 27th, week of the 27th to, to put all that additional fence in.
And I guess just because I was out there and met with Wayne and with BSC and walked through that punch list extensively with Gerber. It's a pretty significant list. In my opinion, there's going to take up to two weeks to get it, get it done. I'm going to have to back, I'll go back and find out what TC schedules or the landscaper schedule is. As well as we were expecting some concrete trade to get started this week. I'll be able to verify that and get back to Wayne.
Okay. Anything else on that?
Not at Gallup Hill. At Ledyard Middle School, things on the exterior did go really well. We, we did the last couple of things with the exception of the fence. And then BSC was out on Thursday to back check. After we finished at Gallup, we went over there and. Rachel from BSC said she would issue her, her status report later this week, possibly tomorrow.
Dan, did they come back and recut the pavers?
No, no, TC did not come back yet.
Okay. So that's still open?
Yes, it is. They did put the last, they did put the last bollard cover on.
Okay.
So that's off there. So we had the pavers left. And I wasn't satisfied with a little bit of the, you know, they need to do a little bit more raking out around that utility manhole structure.
Yes.
Other than that, I think we'll just wait and see what BSC looks at.
Okay. So anything else, Wayne, to pass us with respect to the Gallup Hill School?
No. I mean, right now we're just plugging along and so far, so good.
Okay. Understand all. And at this point here, I would like to. Go ahead and let ONG talk a little bit about the, the monthly status report. We don't have to go too far into it because I know you guys have more updates to it. But if you want to at least go over the summary pages and then I'll let the building committee digest what I just sent them between now and our next meeting. We're not paying the bill for that yet.
Okay. So from the last report, and let me just get that in, in front of me, Steve. I'm not on screen. I have a hard copy in front of me. Just be with me for a quick second. So from, from the, from the formal report that we issued. It was back in February to the present. The, the construction, the projected construction cost went up around roughly $225,000. Projected construction cost from our February report. And that's, and that's mainly because all of the change orders that we had been talking about over the last several months have been inputted into the system. As, as a very broad 30,000 foot view, when we talked about. The, the project, both projects as a whole from. Last time we met, which I believe was two weeks, two weeks ago, we had, we had penciled in some, some of the changes. Since that projection that we were, we were looking at. The actual total projected costs came down of about $61,000 from our previous discussion we had at the meeting. So. And that's, and the reason for that mainly is we've inputted all the changes that we know of. We, we fine tuned some of the Ferguson change orders that I mentioned that we got approval on last time. We got those done at a lower rate. We've also included some credits coming back to the town. So since February, it went up slightly and it's come back down. So inclusive of all the changes, we're, we're still tracking. Pretty well in terms of the projected savings that we've always talked about. And that's sort of a, you know, 50,000 foot view without getting into a whole lot of detail on this report.
All right. And the change orders that, if, what I would like to just acknowledge here is, and between you or Dan, if you would just let us know. On the scope changes, what we have added. I guess those of us with the report there kind of just call that up. Just tell us what line is the new entry as far as the change order number on the scope changes.
I'm not sure I understand your question, Steve.
In other words, this report picked up where the other one left off. If you just want to mention what, since our last report. The, of the scope changes, which line number is where the new entries are? Look, if you don't have that in front of you.
Oh, I have, I have the entire report in front of me. So I'm just trying to pick a number where. I think you want to be because I'm not. When you're referring to the-
If you were to go in Ledyard Middle School and look to page 15 of the report, you would get to change statement. Number 237. And that's COI 200.
Page 15 of the report, page 10 of 11 of the middle school report.
Correct.
Will we start with the handicap operators?
Correct.
Okay. No problem there. And Mike, you had sent me an email. I tried to forward out to the committee and also talked about. That some additional credits coming back to the town that are not reflected in this report.
That's correct, Steve. So i- if you go to, and I could. You could find, you could find those dollar values. If you go to, let me just flip through it here very quickly.
Yeah, Mike, I had that, I had that report in front of me here that you sent me.
Yeah. Yeah. If you, if you go to, yeah, if you go to page, if you go to the. If you go to page four, it's, it's, well, it's not page four of the report. It's page four. It's called the monthly cost control report for Ledyard Middle School. The top right-hand, in the top right-hand. Corner, it says pages one of two. If you, it's actually page four when you look at it. But again, it's called monthly cost control report, Ledyard Middle School. There's about 30. Correct. There's 38, 398 coming back to the town. That's not, they haven't, it hasn't been officially moved. So you're going to be picking up some more savings there. Likewise, in the Gallup Hill School. And it's, in the similar report that's found in the back of the report. There is, there's another. Let's see, 1020, 45. There's about another 65,000. Let's see, 35, 45, 55. There's 55,000, excuse me, coming back. That is, that are not part and parcel of the, the savings that were shown on the front sheet. Those have yet to be captured and moved, moved, if you will. To reduce the scope, to reduce the projected cost of the contract. So there's still, there's still savings yet to be grabbed a little bit here to fine tune these numbers even more.
All right. And I think we're at the point now where we're not adding any additional change orders except what we've already discussed. But there is one exception to that. And I'm taking a look right now at the, the end of the Gallup Hill report. Where we have the last item in the scope changes, which I want to talk about, which is base of vermiculite in the one-story wing. And what I want to talk about here is, Steve June sent me an email this afternoon that talked about a Fussin' O'Neal estimate. For environmental monitoring, should we decide to tear into that wall? And the Fussin' O'Neal pricing was not that expensive. It was, I mean, there's a couple of options in it, but I don't think any of them exceeded like about $10,000. So it wasn't very expensive, but part of that was a discussion in the beginning of that report about removing the exterior brick. So what I'd like to do is have a quick discussion between Wayne, SPA, ONG. On what is our plan to take care of that vermiculite problem? In the, I guess that's the, is that the south end of the one-story wing?
Yeah, I think the intent was to remove a small section or maybe a couple of small sections. So determine what is going on there. It wasn't remove the entire wall or anything. And they do have what they believe is matching brick on site that was leftover. Correct me if I'm wrong there, Mike.
No, we have, there's a, there was a cube of brick down by the, where, where the new barn went in place. Hopefully that cube of brick is still sitting there that matches the. Existing brick. Steve, I did have a chance after you emailed Fussin' O'Neal's letter to me today. It's the first I saw of it. So. I was, I was of the understanding, at least that we were, I understand the pricing here. But what I, it sounds to me like what, what Fussin' O'Neal is basically saying is, look, we're going to be doing the monitoring, but. We're not going to tell you how to, how to abate or how to go about. Drawing this material out of the, out of the wall. And I, I quite honestly thought that's, that's what they, that's what they were going to weigh in on, if you will. Come up with a, come up with a plan of, and, and what the expectation is, what this wall. What has to happen to this wall in order, in order to. Abate it. So based on what I'm reading in the letter, I, I obviously got to go out and get a couple of different. Abatement people to see how they were going to do it and see if it makes sense to, to Fussin' O'Neal. Cause this is really not my bailiwick of, you know, my, my, my thought, a very simplistic approach was, is, is what I talked to Wayne about was. Knocking out some, some holes, you know, maybe five feet on center, vacuuming out the, all the. All the vermiculite in this wall. Thus relieving it of its, of the vermiculite and put some weep holes in it. I, you know, something very simplistic. I, I know that, but.
We were originally going to do, we were originally going to do this from the interior, but then we decided to move to the exterior.
Well, yeah, because only, right. It's, it's easier because who wants to get into painting and everything else and, and making a mess of the, of a finished classroom? Where we could just take some brick out on the outside and be done with it. But the, the procedure that needs to be, the procedure that has to happen with this, I'm not familiar with. Which means that obviously we're going to have to get a couple of contractors involved and see, see what they think and how to approach it. I thought that's what, I thought that's what Fussin' O'Neal would, would create as a, a procedure, if you will. But. This is just basically from monitoring of whatever procedure. The sub comes up with.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah.
Steve June, Wayne?
Yeah, yeah. This is just from monitoring of the, they really never gave us a, a plan of attack. This is just purely from monitoring from Fussin' O'Neal.
The problem here is, my understanding is more the issue of moisture, right, Mike?
Yeah. I mean, the, the, all the vermiculite is holding moisture, well, whatever- Yeah, I mean, the, the, all the vermiculite is holding moist, well, whatever, you know, you, you get moisture in that wall, from, from condensation moving out through the brick, it's going to move, you know, through, through the construction, but it's being trapped and getting just, it's just saturating the vermiculite, and it's working its way back into the room. So, once, once that vermiculite gets removed, we could, uh, put some weep holes in that wall, let it dry out, and, you know, you won't have the issue of that, that milkiness of, uh, that you have at the bottom of the wall.
The other advantage of doing this from the outside is that we don't have to worry about getting all that vermiculite and messing in the classroom, so, but, um, I guess the question is, who should be developing that plan, is it Fussin' O'Neal, or is, um, you know, this is a question, I guess, to Silver Petraselli, where we had other areas in the building where we thought there was asbestos, who developed those plans for removal?
Yeah, I can, I can get together with Fussin' O'Neal and see, uh, how they recommend, uh, to remove this vic- vermiculite.
Yeah, because I'm not sure what, what we have to do to do that, but obviously, we got to, let's get this taken care of, uh, and, and move forward, uh, we don't have anything to approve on that right now with Fussin' O'Neal, because we don't have a plan yet, what exactly we're going to do, but what, um, Mike, what's the earliest you think we'll start doing anything that Fussin' O'Neal has to monitor?
Again, I, I, if, 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 if I could get, if I get a plan from, from a contractor, and they say yea or nay to it, that, you know, you know, hopefully I could get that done in a couple, start that up in a couple of weeks, but I got to get people out there to understand what we're even attempting to do, which I have not done, because, you know, I, I thought, I thought the procedure was going to come from the other side, but that's, that's all right, I mean, you know, yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm writing up an email to, uh, Fussin' O'Neal now, to ask them for direction.
Now, Steve June, I, I don't have that Fussin' O'Neal document in front of me at the moment, I have to dig it out of my phone, but, uh, did they present that cost to you, or was that presented to the town?
Uh, that was presented to, to the town.
Okay, because what I have to look at there is whether we have to execute a contract with Fussin' O'Neal, um, or do we have to?
Is to you, Steve. It's to Steve Jaskowitz, um, the PMBC of the Town of Leadyard.
Okay.
I, I, I talked to, I, yeah, I, I talked to Dean Petraselli, and, uh, he said, well, in the past for this job, uh, all paperwork from Fussin' O'Neal went to the town, so that's how I told, uh, Kathleen Payne at Fussin' O'Neal to handle it.
Okay, I, for some reason, I thought we would put some of that through you, but I think that was for a different part of the project, so, uh, I'll have to send that off to the town, we can execute that, um, uh, it'll come out of the project, but it's a new contract, because our old agreement with Fussin' O'Neal, uh, is, uh, you know, that's expired, we're done with them, we made them a final payment, so we just have a new contract. And, uh, we'll have to do that. All right, Mike, I'll work that on the side separate, and, um, uh, we'll do what we have to do there, and try to get this thing done as soon as we can.
Okay.
All right, uh, is there any questions from the committee on the report, um, you have a chance to take a look at that, we won't see the billing, uh, comes from this until next, uh, next meeting in the beginning of April at the earliest, for the next AIA, uh, but this, most of what you see in the scope changes here from our last meeting were things we talked about at our last meeting, uh, but, uh, and they told us they were coming, we talked about the pricing, uh, and now, uh, we're starting to see that in the paperwork. So, uh, with that, uh, Steve June, uh, we, we already heard from Wayne, we heard from, uh, from ONG, uh, I'd like to give you an opportunity, anything that you're tracking or any information you may have for us.
Um, my, my time is very limited, maybe an hour, maybe an hour and a half, um, I'm not going out to the site anymore, I'm reviewing, uh, any change orders that come in, or, um, answering any of, uh, Wayne's questions, uh, through email or a phone call, um, so my hours are probably under two hours, not much.
All right, no, no problems there, and, um, if, uh, any of these issues that are still out there that may need, uh, your attention, um, you know, we're, we're trying to get to the point here of the next, uh, two months where we can get the project closed out, pay our final bills, and start getting ourselves ready for an audit. Uh, all right, so with that, does anyone have any questions for, uh, design or execution team, if not, I'm going to move on to the change orders. All right, uh, so with that, I'm going to run through these change orders kind of quickly, the first change order we have is change order one sixty-six for the Gallup Hill School, this is to, uh, install the handicap operators at the, uh, at the front door, uh, we had talked about this in previous meetings, uh, you push the button, the door opens, uh, the second door would require a card key or the, uh, office to actually open that for us, this is change order request one sixty-six, and the amount of twenty-seven thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars, it's in order, and I move we accept the change order.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Tominski, do we have any discussion? If there is none, uh, all in favor of approving change orders signify by saying aye in your name, aye, Steve Jaskowitz?
Aye, Pete McIntyre.
That was Jerry Tominski and Pete McIntyre at the same time.
Aye, Bob Guerra.
And aye, Bob Guerra, the ayes have it, the change order is approved. Moving on to the next change order, change order number two hundred, this is, uh, handicap door operators at the Leadyard Middle School, twenty-nine thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars, change order number two hundred, what's that? Okay, it is in order, uh, I move that we accept the change order. Seconded by, was that you, Bob?
Bob, yep.
All right, Bob Guerra seconded that, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, uh, all in favor of approving change order signify by saying your name and aye, Steve Jaskowitz, aye.
Pete McIntyre, aye.
Bob Guerra, aye.
Uh, Jerry, Jerry, did you vote?
Is he there?
Jerry, are you still there?
Yeah, I just can't, uh... Sorry, I was late at work, I, I'm into the meeting, I'll vote aye.
Is that Gary, or is that Jerry?
Gary Schneider.
All right, Jerry.
What happened to Jerry?
I did not take him.
Jerry Tominski, are you still there?
Who?
Well, Ge- Gary, it's fortuitous that you're on, you maintain the forum for us, uh, we have a motion on the floor for, uh, agenda item number five, uh, agenda item number four, twenty-nine thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars, and, uh, we're voting on that.
Right.
Pete McIntyre is second.
So that's been seconded by Pete, Bob's voted yes, I've voted yes, uh, and we're waiting on a fourth vote, so that'd be your vote or Jerry's?
Okay, Gary, aye.
Okay, so, uh, Ge- Jerry Schneider's voted aye, uh, with that, the ayes have it, the change order is approved. Moving on now to cha- and Jerry Tominski, if you come back online, please, uh, let us know, uh, change order number two fifty-six, agenda item number five, uh, the amount of seven thousand sixty-six dollars, that's to add duplex outlets in the chorus room, uh, that change order is in order, and I move that we approve a change order. Let's second it. Uh, I'm not sure who seconded that, uh, go ahead and say your name again.
Pete McIntyre is second.
All right, seconded by Pete McIntyre, all, uh, is there any discussion on the change order? Hearing none, all in favor of approving change order signify by saying your name and aye, aye, Steve Jaskowitz?
Aye, Pete McIntyre.
Aye, Bob Guerra.
Aye, Gary.
All right, with that, we have four yes votes, the ayes have it, change order is approved. Moving on to, uh, item number six on your agenda for change orders, this is change order two five three for the Leadyard Middle School, in the amount of nineteen thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars, this is to add low light and backstage lighting at the stage, uh, the change order is in order, uh, and I move that we approve and accept the change order.
Uh, second, Pete McIntyre.
Okay, it's been seconded by, uh, Pete McIntyre, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the change order signify by saying aye, Steve Jaskowitz, aye.
Jerry Tominski, aye.
All right, Jerry's back.
Gary, aye.
Bob, aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, we have five yes votes, uh, change order is approved. Moving on to item number seven on your agenda, this is change order two five one, uh, this is, uh, for light bars in the auditorium at the Leadyard Middle School, and, uh, we've already previously discussed this as well, uh, change order is in order, uh, fourteen thousand eight hundred eighty-six dollars, and I move that we accept the change order.
Second, Pete McIntyre.
Seconded by Pete McIntyre, is there any discussion? Having heard none, all in favor of approving change order signify by saying aye in your name, Steve Jaskowitz, aye.
Jerry Tominski, aye. Pete McIntyre, aye.
Bob Guerra, aye.
And Gary, aye.
Uh, Jerry, did I get your vote, or did I miss it?
Say, say what, say that in here.
Uh, did you vote on that change order, I didn't hear you.
Uh, aye, on that one.
All right, with that, uh, the ayes have it, change order, uh, number two five one is approved. Moving on to change order one six five for the Gallup Hill School, this is the amount of seventy-three thousand eight hundred eighty dollars for the safe room alterations, uh, that change order is in, change order is in order, um, signed by ONG and, uh, Silver Petraselli, and I move we accept the change order.
Second, Pete McIntyre.
This is seconded by Pete McIntyre, is there any discussion? Having hear no discussion, all in favor of approving the change order signify by saying aye, Steve Jaskowitz, aye.
Uh, Jerry Tominski, aye. Pete McIntyre, aye.
Bob Guerra, aye.
Gary, aye.
And, uh, Jerry, did you vote?
Yes, Gary, aye.
All right, with that, the ayes have it, change order is approved, uh, moving on to change order number one seven six, which is structural steel, uh, at, uh, the Leadyard Middle School, uh, this change order is a, um, negative change order, it's money back to us, it's an allowance closeout of thirty-two thousand six hundred fifty-one dollars, uh, and in this particular case, um, Dan, this one is not, uh, what I'm looking at is not signed, uh, it's a negative change order, so we'll go ahead and approve it, but I do need to get, uh, we have to get that signed, uh...
Excuse me, Steve, I have, I have, uh, signatures on that one.
Oh, you do, okay, good, all right, so with that, uh, this is a negative change order coming back to us, uh, and I recommend we accept the change order, uh, negative thirty-two thousand six fifty-one back to us, so, uh, with that, uh, motion's made.
Second, Pete McIntyre.
Seconded by Mr. McIntyre, any discussions? Usually not on negative, uh, all in favor of approving the change order signify by saying aye, Steve Jaskowitz, aye.
Jerry Tominski, aye. Pete McIntyre, aye.
Bob Guerra, aye.
Gary, aye.
So with that, the ayes have it, change order is approved. Moving on to change order application two one four, this is another closeout, uh, in this case, um, we actually wound up with a little bit of a pot, a, a net balance back on the allowances to, uh, for masonry, this is the amount of thirty, for the Leadyard Middle School, change order request two one four, in the amount of three thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars, and, uh, sometimes the, the closeouts go in our way, and sometimes they, uh, they go the other way, uh, so it's an additional thirty-seven fifty-eight, uh, thirty-eight twenty-six with the markup from CM, uh, so with that, I move that we approve change order number two one four, the amount of three thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars.
Pete McIntyre is second.
Seconded by Mr. McIntyre, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the change order signify by saying aye, Steve Jaskowitz, aye.
Uh, Jerry, aye. Pete McIntyre, aye.
Bob, aye.
Gary, aye.
So with that, the change order is approved, uh, moving now on to change order number two thirty-one, this is segment eleven, uh, now, this one, another closeout here, this one is another positive closeout, five thousand one hundred and five dollars, and, uh, we added several, uh, on this particular one, we, under this, uh, allowance, we actually added, uh, several heads based on the fire marshal, so as a result of that, we exceeded the allowance that we have, um, and the allowance was two hundred seventy-five dollars per head, nothing we could really do about it, fire marshal says put them in, we put them in, so with that, this is, uh, change order request number two thirty-one, five thousand one hundred five dollars, and I move we approve the change order.
Uh, Pete McIntyre is second.
Seconded by Mr. McIntyre, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the change order signify by saying aye, Steve Jaskowitz, aye.
Jerry Tominski, aye. Pete McIntyre, aye.
Bob, aye.
Jerry, aye.
All right, the ayes have it, change order is approved, uh, moving on, uh, next, we have, uh, this is a site work closeout, uh, for Leadyard Middle School, it is a negative change order with Richards to, uh, a negative seventeen thousand one hundred twenty-nine dollars for site work closeout, uh, so, uh, we always like these kind of change orders, so with that, I move we approve the change order.
Second, Pete McIntyre.
Seconded by Mr. McIntyre, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the change order signify by saying your name and aye, Steve Jaskowitz, aye.
Jerry, aye. Pete McIntyre, aye.
Bob, aye.
Gary, aye.
The ayes have it, change order is approved. Okay, another negative change order, this is change order request, uh, change order number two three three, uh, Leadyard Middle School, in the amount of twelve thousand seven hundred sixteen dollar credit for miscellaneous metals, uh, and it is in order, I recommend that we accept the negative change order.
Second, Pete McIntyre.
Seconded by Mr. McIntyre, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the change order, uh, negative change order, signify by saying aye, Steve Jaskowitz, aye.
Jerry, aye. Pete, aye.
Bob, aye.
Jerry, aye.
With that, the ayes have it, change order is approved, uh, for ONG, uh, and for Lisa, I need to figure out a way to get, uh, while Marcia can sign those, uh, based on the minutes and, uh, sign the invoices to approve payment, I still have to sign these change orders, uh, so I think, uh, I just got to coordinate Lisa, either you either mail me the originals, I sign them, or we work something out, so I don't have to come into town hall.
Yeah, I don't have originals, I, I've just been printing the ones that they're emailing me, but in the past, you know, Marcia said that's fine, but we still need, yeah, we do need your signature on them, Steve.
All right, for ONG, uh, you have the originals on this, or does Silver Petraselli have the originals? I think it'll stand, sign, and, and then, uh, I sent it to Steve, so Steve, you have wet signs? Yes, Steve June.
Yes, I have, I have the, well, I don't have the original, I have the email version, um, I can send those off to you, Steve.
I'm just trying to figure out who has the wet sign, so I can sign the wet sign one, so I can get them all back to the right people.
Well, they origi- they originated at our office, so, um, but Steve June wouldn't have a wet copy either, because they're not mailed, they're emailed to be signed.
All right, so when they go to Steve June, normally, they're just emailed, even when they're...
They're emailed, correct.
They're emailed with a digital screen.
All right, let's chase down which ones that you don't have signed for me, so I don't over, overprint and sign, and we get those, and I'll get all the, them signed and back out to you. We don't need the committee for that, though. All right, um, with that...
Do you need what?
So, what I basically need is the, uh, the Steve June signed ones that Lisa has, uh, back to, uh, me electronically, unless I already have them, so I can sign those. back to, uh, me electronically, unless I already have them, so I can sign those.
Thank you for calling. The person you're calling is not a fan.
Whoops, somebody's got a mute. So we need, uh, so Lisa, I'll get with you, and I'll either get, uh, just the front pages from you, and I'll sign them.
Okay.
All right. That, um, are there, right now I have no other change orders on the agenda for tonight. And for, uh, for ONG, we meet again in two weeks, and I'm sure you'll have more.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's two that I don't think ever made it to you, Steve. One was the paving. At the storage barn that, that the town was looking to get done. I think Steve has that, but I don't know if it ever made it to you.
I, okay. Um, Mike, I did get it, I think. When did Wayne get that to me? Thursday afternoon. Um, and I, I'd sent an email out to, you know, ONG, SPA, and Wayne. If we really can try and, um, adhere to, you know, the four o'clock deadline on Wednesday for any change orders, any invoices, whatever, that would really help me, because working at home, like I said, I have limited resources here, and the agendas have to be posted on Thursdays. So, um, you could really adhere to that, you know, Wednesday at four o'clock, off day.
Okay, I was not aware of that, but I will now.
No problem, and we'll, we'll put all those on the agenda for, uh, two weeks from today. All right, moving on.
I do, yeah, I do have it now.
All right, we got some invoices to pay, and some of these are outside of ONG, but, um, you know, uh, Mike, uh, you know, you're welcome to stay on the line here. I don't think AV is affect you moving down further. Anything with Dan? Uh, do you guys have any other business? Steve June, you probably want to stay on till after I pay your invoices, but, um.
Okay.
Is there anything else, uh, for, uh, you know, Silver Petraselli or ONG that I need to have you guys on the line?
Nothing from Silver Petraselli.
No, I'm all set from ONG.
I'm also good with ONG. Thank you all. All right, thanks, guys. All right, moving on. Uh, these are invoices, all right, these are some invoices we need to pay, um. As you know, we had the wiring done for the, um, we'll call them the sheds, even though they're really garage buildings. Uh, this is for the Leger Middle School. It's a, uh, Wayne, this work has now been done, correct?
Work has been done. The, uh, invoice is, I think, about seven or eight hundred dollars more than the estimate. Uh, we originally believed that the, um, power was taken, or the conduit was run out of the, um, circuit breaker panel in the kitchen. Uh, when we got into it, we found that it was actually in the attic section well into the building, uh, so there was an additional 130 feet of wire that had to be run. So this is the, uh, and it's listed separately on the bottom of the invoice for the additional 130 feet of, uh, additional wire that was run, plus a few hours' labor.
Roger. All right, uh, so with this, uh, this, uh, this bill, D'Amico Electric here, this is for the Leger Middle School for the, uh, outdoor learning building, uh, in the amount of $9,760. And so with that, I move that we approve the invoice for payment.
Second, Pete McIntyre.
Seconded by Mr. McIntyre. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, uh, all in favor of approving the invoice signify by saying your name and aye. Aye, Steve Jeskowitz.
Hi, Bob.
Hi, Pete McIntyre.
Hi, Gary.
And I didn't know if I heard Jerry in that mix.
Yeah, that was Gary, not Jerry.
Yeah, it was Gary. I didn't know I heard Jerry. All right, I think I heard Jerry in the background. Was that you, Jerry? We may have lost Jerry again, but either way, we have four votes aye, so with that, the invoice is approved. Uh, moving on to, uh, we have four AIA payments here for Silver Petraselli and Associates. I'm just gonna go through them real quickly. Uh, it appears to me that we paid the March invoice for Silver Petraselli, but we did not pay the February. And then we have the new April invoice. Is that correct, Lisa?
That is, that is correct. Long story, but I found the February, um, SPA invoices in another box while we were searching for another check. So they, and I double-checked and with Marcia, and they have never been on the agenda or paid.
That's what I thought. All right, so with that, the first is, uh, AIA application 20-120 for Silver Petraselli for the Gallup Hill School for February 2020. The amount of $1,542.50. And I move that we, remember, we're timing materials on these right now. I move that we approve payment.
Second, Pete McIntyre.
Seconded by Mr. McIntyre. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the invoice signify by saying aye. Steve Jeskowitz, aye.
Jerry, aye. Pete McIntyre, aye.
Bob, aye.
Gary, aye.
All right, the ayes have it, motion, uh, carries. Uh, AI application number 20-137 for Silver Petraselli for the Leger Middle School. This is for February 2020, the amount of $4,189.25. Uh, that invoice is in order, and I move that we approve payment.
Uh, second, Pete McIntyre.
Seconded by Mr. McIntyre. Uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the invoice signify by saying your name and aye. Steve Jeskowitz, aye.
Jerry, aye. Pete McIntyre, aye.
Bob, aye.
Gary, aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next, we have AI application number 20673, Silver Petraselli, Gallup Hill School. Uh, this is, uh, for the period ending at the end of March, uh, in the amount of $2,082 even. And I move, the invoice is in order, and I move that we authorize payment.
Second, Pete McIntyre.
Seconded by Mr. McIntyre. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the invoice signify by saying your name and aye. Steve Jeskowitz, aye.
Jerry, aye. Pete McIntyre, aye.
Bob, aye.
Gary, aye.
The ayes have it, the invoice is approved. Moving on, uh, number 19, AI application 201, 20684, Silver Petraselli. Dated 4/1 of 20, the amount of $2,860. The invoice is in order, and I move that we approve payment.
Second, Pete McIntyre.
Seconded by Mr. McIntyre. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye and your name. Steve Jeskowitz, aye.
Jerry, aye. Pete McIntyre, aye.
Bob, aye.
Gary, aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, and, uh, motion carries. All right, so we paid all our bills, all our change orders, uh, we get some more change orders. We are on track to be able to get this thing closed out the next, uh, couple of months and get into the really fun stuff of auditing. So is there any other business, uh, related to the middle school or the Gallup Hill School?
None from Silver Petraselli.
I'm sorry? You're signing off?
None from.
Thank you. All right, none. All right, thanks, Steve. Uh, anyone else? All right, thanks. Anyone else have anything on the, uh, the middle school or the Gallup Hill School? All right, moving on to the Leger High School Track and Field Project. Wayne, if you want to give us an update on what's been going on out there? Looks like the weather's been reasonably cooperative, and, um, of course, uh, you know, I don't know what we're doing with graduation right now, but, uh, is it possible that the, uh, field will be ready for graduation?
Uh, yeah, they're still on track, um, to have it, uh, ready for graduation. Basically, all their subsurface work, for the most part, is done. Uh, I believe they have just the electrical conduits to run, um, across the field, and I did ask, um, that we while they had it open, that they continue to the, um, scoreboard and to the concession stand with a conduit. If we, if the, eventually in the future, they may want to, uh, accept credit cards or something at the concession stand, and we'll need a internet link to that. So those were, um, Eric said that they were within the scope and the, uh, the allotments that were in the contract, so they shouldn't be change orders. There were a little bit of savings, because we reduced the, uh, size of the pipes from four inch to two inch. There was really no, um, and we're gonna run double, so we could run the internet, uh, so they could do reporting or whatever they wanted at the location, also instead of just power. Um, so that's in pretty good shape right now. Uh, we are waiting for information still on pricing on the waterline. Uh, Grotton Utilities is pushing to put a two-inch line in, which would be removing the existing one-inch. But I don't believe any more than a one-inch is necessary. Eric Rossi, the engineer from his firm, doesn't believe that any more than the one-inch is necessary. Uh, so hopefully, by the next meeting, we'll have that dollar amount, um, in place.
Roger. Uh, and as far as the, um, the schools in general, right now, we're officially, uh, not in session within the buildings, closed until what day?
May 20th is the last date that we have right now.
Okay, uh, and so there is still a possibility we'll be back in the classrooms. And even with social distancing, uh, at an event like a graduation, uh, you know, we'd have to figure out how to do that, because, um, even if we were to go indoors for graduation, uh, you know, the, I think social distancing is even harder inside the auditorium than it is, uh, yes, in the bleachers, so.
Um, I don't, I don't know what they're gonna do with graduation. Um, I'm sure we could separate the graduates enough, um, to, to, you know, keep the social distancing. We might have to limit it to, um, parents or something like that. And maybe do a virtual graduation, um, you know, for other grandparents and, you know, other family members to view.
Yeah, let's just hope the field, the field is done by then and the weather holds. Uh, if you look at the, uh, if you look at the pictures from the Air Force Academy graduation, you'll see what it looks like when they've got a thousand, uh, graduates all spread out on a field.
Yeah.
And, uh, but then they all threw their hats in the air.
They also had no family.
Yes, they did, that's correct. Um, and, uh, but they all still threw their hats in the air at the end, and then everybody touched each other's hat, so I don't know how that all worked. Maybe they just left them there. Um, all right, so, uh, good update on high school track and field. We don't have any invoices for that this meeting. I imagine in our next meeting, we'll have invoices again.
Yes.
All right, uh, and I'm sure that, uh, Stone was happy to get paid.
Yes, they appreciated that greatly.
All right, good, uh, we'll keep them moving. Uh, on the high school, uh, tunnel asbestos, uh, project, um, some emails have changed, uh, hands in the last, um, since our last meeting. When we last met, uh, as a PMBC, Wayne had indicated he was in communication with Michelle Dixon at the state. The states agreed to a higher dollar value for the project. And that the, my understanding is that tomorrow night, the board of ed votes, is that correct? Or is that Wednesday?
Um, the Wednesday night, I believe, is their meeting.
And then the town council meets on Wednesday as well, right?
I believe so. I believe they're both, yes.
That's correct.
So with the, the board of ed has to approve the higher EDO number. The town council needs to approve more money to us, and then we'll have enough money for, um, uh, to be able to accept a low bid. I did send a note to, and Wayne, I think I carboned you, and what I sent to Linda Davis, suggesting that they add a small contingency amount, because Mystic Air's estimate is an estimate for the, uh, cost for monitoring. It could be higher, and there's some unknowns, uh, still in the asbestos project. We might wind up being built for more material, uh, if they discover more.
Yes, and, uh, also, the state has agreed to the 255 for the contract amount, but has not agreed yet for the additional 22,000 for the monitoring. They're going from 214 to 255. I'm working with them now to see if I can get them up to the full project amount, including the, the advertising and stuff, which is two, I don't have the figure in front of me.
Two eighty. Right, and that's what went through town council for a higher dollar figure. Once they release that to us, I did mention to Chairman Davis, if you give us the exact amount of money, you know, the project comes out higher, we're gonna have to come back and ask you for more money, so. We'll see what comes out. I have not got a response yet to that email. Uh, so are there any questions for Wayne on the, and we still have time to get that issued. Um, did you get a response back on the extension of the, uh?
Yeah, I sent you that. Yes, I sent you that, uh, I thought I had sent you, you and Jay, that copy of the letter back from the contractor that he extended his pricing until the end of May.
Okay, so, uh, we're not super tight on the time, but we want to get the work started. I thought the last one I had for you is that you were reaching out and asking them for the credit, uh, or the extension, but either way, that's good. Does anyone on the committee have any questions for Wayne on the, uh, track and field or the, uh, high school tunnel asbestos abatement? Okay, with none, uh, that's good. Before we adjourn, just quickly, uh, Lisa, our next meeting is the 4th of May, but I believe that is the last, uh, month, every, uh, twice a month meeting we have on this calendar, correct?
May, we have two meetings. June, we go to one meeting.
Good, 'cause I was gonna say, we probably need two meetings in May to get through the rest of these change orders. So with that, um, does anyone have anything else for the committee? If not, I'm gonna get ready to move to adjournment.
Pete McIntyre is second.
Pete, just second the adjournment. Uh, any discussion on adjournment? Hearing none, all in favor of adjournings signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
All right. All right, the ayes have it, we're adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a good evening. I'll see you guys soon.
Bye now.
All right, goodnight, all.